The broadcast is now starting. All attendees are in listen-only mode.
La, 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 la.
Cantor Bush, is that you?
I was warming up. Yes, it is me.
Great, we can hear you, thank you.
Well, you unmuted me, that's right.
Good evening, everybody. This is Mayor Protem Tang. I would like to call the November 19, 2024 City Council Meeting to order at 6:30 p.m. Go-to webinar transcript of council meeting are available upon request after the council meeting. For real-time transcription, visit your Apple App or Google Play Store and download services such as Live Translate or Live Caption. The public is encouraged to join the meeting online or by phone at the numbers printed on the agenda, which can be found on the city's website at www.diamondbar.ca.gov, or in person, Men Auditorium, South Coast Air Quality Management District. We have also allowed the public comments to be submitted in advance to the city clerk. If any were received, they will be noted for the record when we get to the public comment period. This meeting is being recorded, and by participating, you are given your permission to be televised. This meeting will be broadcast every Saturday and Sunday at 9:00 a.m. and alternate Tuesday at 8:00 p.m. and archived for viewing on the city's website of www.diamondbar.ca.gov. Now, we'll proceed with the Pledge of Allegiance invocation and roll call. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance led by a council member, Lo. And then, please remain standing for the invocation by Cantor Paul Bush, Temple City, Temple Beth Israel.
Ladies and gentlemen, please rise, face the flag, hand over your heart, ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Protem Tang, council members, city staff, fellow citizens, about 74 years ago, a volume was created called "The Faith of America: Reading Songs and Prayers for Celebration of the American Holidays." And in the spirit of the season, I'd like to offer one of the prayers that they compiled at this ti- at that time for our Thanksgiving holiday, which we will celebrate together next week. Oh, you who are Creator and who sustains our life by Your bounties, you who have blessed our land with all manner of wealth, bless you also us, your people, with the Spirit of humility. Let us not, in the pride of possession, forget that we but hold all this wealth in trust, and that only when we are faithful to that trust and use our wealth with wisdom, justice, and generosity can it yield true happiness. Teach us that the joy of creation far surpasses that of acquisition, that there is more security in mutual helpfulness than in selfishness, that to earn the love and gratitude of our fellows affords a deeper satisfaction than to force their fear, servility, and envy. We thank you, oh God, for all your gifts, but above all, we thank you for the gift of your Spirit, for only by it can we learn to use your gifts for our blessing. And we say together, amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
City Clerk Santana, can you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Mayor Protem. Councilmember Chow?
Here.
Councilmember Lo?
Here.
Councilmember Tai?
Here.
Mayor Protem?
Here.
And Mayor Louis absent tonight.
City Manager Fox, are there any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes to the agenda this evening.
The agenda is hereby approved. Now, we have a special presentation by Los Angeles County Assessor for Update. We have Mr. Jeff Prin here to present.
Mayor Protem, should we move that to the end of the meeting, or should we go ahead and stay here?
I think we'll go ahead and proceed.
I can wait until the other meeting. I can go over to Councilmember Tai's home just to make sure it's assessed properly while I'm waiting. But, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. It's great to be here. I tease Councilmember Tai. We've known each other for probably more years than either one of us would care to admit, and we tease each other relentlessly. It probably doesn't translate very well over television, so I'll spare my usual Steve Tai jokes, but I'm pleased to be able to be here. This is my first time attending a Diamond Bar City Council meeting, and you're probably all thinking, you know, thank goodness, we got the county property tax assessor here to liven things up, probably only to be surpassed if the mosquito commissioner is here, which is probably Councilmember Tai. But I always like to begin my presentations, I mean, I'm going to tell you about some of our services and programs, a little bit about our office, but I always like to begin by telling people what it is that my office does not do, because the one thing I do not do is the one thing everybody thinks I do. I do not collect taxes. I am not the tax assessor. The person who collects taxes has a very intuitive title. She is called the tax collector. The, my office is an appraisal, we're real estate appraisers. We're responsible for determining the value of all property in LA County. My office is the largest local property assessment agency in the United States. We've got about 1,400 employees, a budget of a quarter billion dollars, responsible for establishing the value for two and a half million real property parcels and business assessments annually, which this last year together were valued at over $2 trillion, and it generates over $20 billion in property tax revenue, which is allocated to schools, cities, and other local government agencies. While my office is not a revenue department per se, revenue is the byproduct of our work. Property taxes that are based on the values that my office establishes comprise about 22% of the county's general fund, and it's the largest single source of discretionary funds that the county has, and property taxes, as you know, pay for services we all depend on, roads, libraries, parks, police, fire, hospitals, et cetera. In a lot of ways, my office is the most important local government agency, because no other government agency can do their job till I've done mine, and if I don't do my job thoroughly and completely, then revenues that should be going into local government are left on the table. The property tax administrative system is designed for optimal public confusion. There's many different departments, and each have a different piece of the system. And the kind of way, the way it works in a nutshell is when you purchase a home, you record a deed. If you do new construction, you get a permit from the city. Those deeds and those permits come to my office, and we then do an appraisal of value. We then turn that data over to another department called the auditor controller. They're the ones who tell you how much you owe. They apply the tax rates and the direct assessments, and then they turn that data over to the treasurer tax collector, who sends out the bills and collects the payments. My primary job is the production of the annual assessment roll, which is essentially just the inventory of all taxable property of the county. Includes land and improvements, as well as what we call business personal property, which is furniture, equipment, machinery, and fixtures. Although we also are responsible for assessing aircraft, both commercial and general aviation aircraft, mobile homes, boats, and for some reason, racehorses. The assessment roll serves a couple of critical functions. Primarily, it's the foundation for the property tax system, although it also serves as an important tool for local government that rely on it to, in anticipation of property taxes and building their budgets, as well as an important economic indicator for the real estate market. I'm pleased to report that the 2024 assessment roll, which closed at the end of June, had a total net value of $2.1 trillion, $100 billion increase over last year. It represented a 4.85% increase in property values across the county. That's the 15th consecutive year of property growth in the county. The assessment process in your fair city includes 18,010 single-family residences, 22 multifamily residences, and 724 commercial industrial parcels. Diamond Bar experienced a 3.9% growth in the assessed value. Total assessed value in the, in the city is $469.3 million, and which had about a $2.5 billion increase over the previous year. The rate of growth was a little bit less than the county average, but that's probably more just due to the number of transactions that took place over the course of the last year. Next chart on your screen here shows what the median sales price of a single-family home is in LA County. It's valued at $952,000. In Diamond Bar, the median sales price of a single-family home is $1.1 million, and that, that rate increased 7.7% over last year. That $1.1 million is kind of important. For the next topic I want to mention is a relatively new law called Proposition 19. This is something adopted by the voters in 2020. It is an amendment to Prop 13. It allows, it does two things. It allows property owners to transfer their tax base when they move, if they qualify. You have to be 55 years or older, severely disabled, or the victim of a natural disaster such as a flood, fire, or earthquake. It means that when you sell your home and buy a new one, you can take your previous tax base and transfer it to your new home. You could transfer that, that value to a home anywhere in the state of California, to a home of any value, and you could transfer that three times, or six times, if you're married. The other thing that Prop 19 does is much less popular. This deals with family inheritance, and Prop 19 greatly reduced the benefits in family inheritance. This is where the $1 million median sales price comes into effect. Under Prop 19, now, today, if you want to leave your property to your children, in some cases, you can leave it to your grandchildren, but in order for your children to, the only property your children can now inherit from you is the home that you live in to take advantage of the, of the tax benefits. For them to qualify for that tax benefit, they have to move into that home within one year, and they have to file the home residence exemption. Prop 19 also puts a cap on how much value your children can inherit. It's really, it's a million dollars. Any value over $1 million will be assessed at the market, at the market rate. So if you bought your home 30 years ago for $100,000 and now worth $2 million, the first million dollars in value at the $100,000 assessment can be transferred to your children. The second million dollar will be assessed at, at market, market rate. And you have to do this very quickly. If you do it within a year, you risk, file for it within a year, you risk losing that, that tax, that tax benefit. The last thing I wanted to talk about is a relatively new program that my office recently launched called the Assessor's E-Service Account. We are moving to a, to a much more robust platform of services that will be able to be done online. Some of this has to do with a project I'm very proud of. We've invested over $100 billion to trend, to upgrade our technology platform from an old mainframe, green screen, paper-based system to a new digitized cloud-based system, which will allow us to offer very robust services to the public. One of them is something called the E-Service Account. This allows anybody who owns property to set up a profile on our website with your property. It allow you to do a number of functions online, such as updating your mailing address, but importantly, it allows you to register for something called the homeowner alert. And this is important, because I think you're probably all familiar, that in recent years there's been an increasing incidence of title fraud being perpetrated against property owners. One of the challenges we had previously is that if somebody records something on your property, such as a grant deed or a deed of trust, if it wasn't authorized by you, the first time you're going to hear about that is when you get a letter in the mail from the registrar recorder, usually 30 to 45 days later. But now, anybody who owns property can register their email on our website, and anytime something is recorded against your property, you'll receive a email within 48 hours. So if it is fraud, there'll be instructions as to how to report that and begin the, the process of undoing that, that effort. The last thing I want to mention is tax savings. There is an important tax savings program that I talk about all the time called the homeowners exemption. Anybody in LA County who owns a home and lives in that home qualifies for the homeowners exemption. We estimate here in Wall, in Diamond Bar, that about one-third of all homeowners who qualify do not apply for it, and they don't apply for it simply because they don't know about it. And so, it save, it allows me to reduce your assessed value by $7,000 a year, which saves you not a lot, but about 70 bucks a year on your property taxes. However, it's critical to have, have that, that exemption if you want to apply for Proposition 19. So the two, in closing, the two leave-behinds I want to offer to you is, hopefully you can help me share with your constituency, is the homeowner alert to protect their home from fraud, and two, the homeowners exemption, where they can save some money on their property taxes. It's an easy one-page document to submit, and hopefully, particularly for people on fixed incomes or limited, or seniors, it might be a benefit to save a little bit of money every year. But that concludes my remarks. I appreciate the opportunity to be here to share this information with you, and happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any of your colleagues, any questions or comment?
No, since he was kind enough to leave me alone, I'm going to leave him alone.
I do have questions. So first of all, thank you Assessor for being here. I think you're probably the first assessor to make it all the way out to Diamond Bar, I think, ever, if I'm not mistaken. I know you're very proud of the work that you've done in terms of modernizing the, the systems that's used by the agent, by, by your department. Can you talk a little bit more about kind of what steps you've taken to modernize the records and how much easier it is now to look up records?
So, just to give you a little snapshot as to what it was previously and what it is now, when I was elected in 2014, we had this ancient antiquated technology platform. Although, other thing I've learned about this is that is really the standard that still exists in a lot of, a lot, large government agencies. One of the reasons the DMV and the unemployment office are so inefficient is because they are still using an old mainframe system. To get access information about your property, when I first got there, the employees would have to access, you know, one of a half a dozen different green screens. It may be that the question you ask, ask require that they reference your property parcel jacket, which was kept in paper form and housed in different locations throughout the county. So we, we made it, you know, transfer you to the office, which covers Diamond Bar, which is in South El Monte, and somebody would have to get out of their desk and go to these big cavernous rooms and, and find a paper file. It could take hours and sometimes even a day to get information to answer even the most basic questions. We have digitized two and a half million property files in our county, so now any property file is available to any employee on their, on their computer. We have shifted from this old mainframe system. We went live with our new sys, new cloud-based system in August of this year, which is just transformed the way we do business in our office. It, we've been, it also has meant we've been able to increase transparency in our office by making all of our public data available publicly, either on our website or through the county's open data portal. It's, it's, it's actually served to stabilize the number of calls and emails that we're getting, because so much information is now available in a do-it-yourself format, and we anticipate that this will be, become more and more the case in the coming years as we add more of our workflow and, and operational functions to an online format.
You have questions?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Prin, for being here. Really appreciate your, the information that you shared. I remember prosecuting real estate fraud in 2021, and one of my comments to our working group was, if only the homeowners were notified whenever there was a deed recorded against their property. And at that time, the only way you would know is whether or not you got your tax bill, because if you didn't, then obviously it went to somebody else or you've had a different name. And so I'm so glad that you made this change, and this will help us a great deal, because real estate fraud really is, is horrible, and it affects many of our elderly citizens and, and people who can leave, well, no one can afford to lose their house. I'm really glad you're doing that.
Thank you, council member. Anything the city can do to help us to promote this program, I would be grateful. Right now, we've about 2 million different, about, you know, 2 million single-family homes and condos in the county. Only 20,000 people have signed up for this service to date. My goal is to get this into hundreds of thousands, and I think if we do that, we can take a big bite out of real estate fraud.
Well, maybe the, your, your, your smart staff can figure out a way to automate that and kind of cross, cross-pull email from other data banks, data banks within the county system, because it'll take forever to, for everyone to sign up, but just as a suggestion.
We are exploring that, yes.
And then my other question is, and with respect to Prop 19 and the reassessment, I'm really interested in that, and I know that there are many constituents in our city that's interested in that. Where can they go to find the whole body of regulations that have arisen as a result of this proposition?
So if you go to my website, which is assessor.lacounty.gov, we have a page dedicated to information on Proposition 19. There's additional information on the Board of Equalization website. Almost anything, any question you have can be answered there on Prop 19. If you're wondering what your, if there might be a, a different tax rate, if you, in terms of inheritance or base-year transfers, there's actually even a tool on that website that will give you an estimate of what your new tax rate will be.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Thanks for coming out.
Shirley.
Councilmember Tai, do you have any comment?
He knows I'm being nice tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember Tai. Nice change.
Thank you, Mr. Prin, for coming here to do the presentation. Very important information, and I think our city can put all this useful information in our newsletter to send out to our citizens and let them know about your important programs.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council members. It's great to be with you this evening.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Bye-bye.
We proceed to the city managers' reports and recommendations. Mr. Fox, do you have any reports?
No additional reports this evening.
Okay, then we'll proceed to public comments. Public comments is the time reserved on each regular meeting's agenda to provide an opportunity for members of the public to directly address the council on concerned calendar items or other matters of interest not on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Although the city council values your comments pursuant to the Brown Act, members of the city council or staff may briefly respond to public comments if necessary, but no extended discussion and no action on such matters may take place. There's a five-minute maximum time limit when addressing the city council. At this time, I will call up speakers who have submitted a speaker card first, then City Clerk Santana will ask for those callers to join the teleconference, who may wish to speak on the public comments. And I have received speaker cards from Bob Ma. Mr. Bob Ma, can you come forward?
Thank you, council members. My name is Bob Ma. My concern is about brush, wire brush in my neighborhood. I live in the 900 block of Summit Ridge Drive. The area, I'm, all my concern is Summit Ridge Drive and Thunder Trail. And to give you a better understanding, it's where the Southern California Edison Power Line, which divided North and the South, North and the South Diamond Bar. Okay, so you get idea, okay? So, so for year, there are wire brush growing just next to the power line, and in the, in my last 35 years in Diamond Bar, I have not seen any trimming of the brushes. My concern is that there are power line, suppose if the capacitor explosion or thunder strike on the cable, it could create a spark and, and, and the damage would be devastated, because their house, my, my house is only five, is only, I'm only five house from the power line here. My, my, I think probably be there, there should be a buffer zone where the city can do some trimming, maybe once a year, you know, so it could create a buffer zone. So if, if, if fire happened, then, then, then we, then the fire department can extinguish the, extinguish it immediately, and without damage the home. And, and this, so, so this issue is especially important at this time, because I just received my home insurance bill, and it doubled. Next year will be double from this year. I, for this year, I paid 1,700. Next year, I pay 3,500, you know? Who know? Maybe they just will discontinue my, my policy if they see that this area not safe and prone to fire. So in summary, I wish the city Diamond Bar will look into this wire brush problem. The area is at, is at Summit Ridge Drive and Thunder Trail. And, and yeah, thank you for the opportunity to give me to, to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. It looks like this is a public safety issue that so, so should our city send us some people to take a look and to see what this residents report, has any of our concerns? has any of a concern to our public safety.
Certainly. Our Public Works Director, David Liu, will follow up on that.
Thank you. Our next speaker card comes from Cynthia Yu.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, councilmembers, city staff, and members of audience. My name is Cynthia Yu from Diamond Bar Library. Do you need crochet, weave, or otherwise craft with yarn? Join us this Thursday, November 21st at 1:00 p.m. and meet fellow young crafters and unwind at an informal gathering as you work on your project. Ask questions, get inspired, and just enjoy crafting in a group setting. This program is for adults and will take place in our beautiful reading garden. Also, join us this Friday, November 22nd, for an evening of stress-busting family crafting time. An assortment of crafts will be available, including STEAM activities as well as general arts and craft supplies for you to create your own masterpiece. This program is for all ages and will take place in the children's area of the library. All LA County Library locations will be closed on November 28th and 29th in observance of Thanksgiving. Downloads and streaming are always available online at lacountylibrary.org. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all the speaker card I have. And city clerk Santana, were there any public comments, emails received, or there's any callers on the line?
Mayor Protem, there were no emails submitted for public comment tonight. But if any member of the public joining this meeting via teleconference would like to address the city council, please select the raised hand icon in your go-to opener program now. I will unmute callers one at a time, and you will know it's your turn to speak when I announce your name and you hear a recorded message state unmuted. And we do have one hand raised, Roxy Chwang.
Hello, my name is Roxy. Next to me is my partner, Stephen. So I want to talk about some concerns with the inefficiencies and delays in the City of Diamond Bar's building and safety and planning departments. We purchased a home early December, and because, sorry, early September, and because of the delays in the city's permitting process, we're still unable to move into our home, and we may not be able to move in until 2025. So throughout the process, we've been calling several times a day, emailing with no response. Yesterday, we went, made an appointment, went in person, and there was no staff member available to meet us. After waiting for 20 minutes, a manager explained to us that the department is really short-staffed, overwhelmed, and they don't honor their respond within 10 days policies anymore. So we were unable to get an estimated timeline for when we will receive a response for our submission. And in the manager's own words, it could be today, it could be two months, we simply don't know. The delays were made even worse because the department doesn't even acknowledge when we make the submission. And while we like to think that this is sort of an anomaly, it only happens to us, but during our visit at the city hall yesterday, we actually encountered a plumber who said his livelihood was at stake because of significant project delays, because the city never gets back to him, and he can't begin work. If he can't begin work, he can't get paid, and his children can eat. A similar project in a neighboring city only took less than two weeks. We also ran into another group of contractors also there. Their application has been lost between planning and building departments after paying over like 6,000 in permitting fees. And that results in delays for over two months, so they're also unable to proceed with their project. So right now, we're facing this position where we can either be homeless or we can live in an incomplete construction site. Where first-time homeowners were immigrants, we didn't even know we had to apply for permits. And when we did apply for permits, we were met with nothing but this type of punishment. And while the city was really fast at charging us permit fees, it failed at actually like processing the permits. And so I now just regret having purchased a home in Diamond Bar and feel like if homeowners are expected to comply with the permitting process, the city really needs to address this inefficiency because right now, it's unsustainable for both residents. We need a place to live, and contractors' businesses, they need to eat too. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there other comment?
There are no other hands raised, Mayor Protem.
Is there any other people want to speak to the city councils publicly? City Manager Fox, can you? For that speaker's online for issues, would you please take a look tomorrow? Make sure that what they have been problem that can be solved pretty soon?
Yes, certainly, Mayor. We'll certainly follow up with that tomorrow. And I do apologize, we are extremely short-staffed in the building division right now. So I do know we are behind, but we'll certainly take a look at where we're at and make sure that we're doing everything possible to expedite some of the backlog.
Thank you. Is there any more comments? If there's no more comments, I'm going to close the public comment session. We'll move to the next session, schedule of future events and consent calendar. City Manager Fox, can you please announce the schedule of the upcoming events and then proceed with the consent calendar?
Good evening, mayor and council. On the scheduled events, there will be free catalytic converter etching tomorrow morning from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. at Calvary Chapel on Golden Springs. The planning commission will be meeting on Tuesday, November 26th, starting at 6:30 p.m. in the Windmill Community Room at City Hall. The Parks and Recreation Commission meeting scheduled for Thursday, November 28th, has been canceled, and City Hall will be closed on November 28th and Friday, November 29th in observance of the Thanksgiving holidays. And our next city council meeting will be held on Tuesday, December 3rd, starting at 6:30 p.m. here in the AQMD auditorium. On the consent calendar this evening, you have the approval of the November 5th regular city council meeting minutes, ratification of the check register dated October 30th through November 12th, approval of the treasurer's statement for October, adoption of a proclamation declaring November 30th as Small Business Saturday, adoption of Resolution 2024-40 approving an agreement with Mission Square Retirement to administer the city's 457 deferred compensation plan, and approval of an amendment to the professional services agreement with LIE Associates to provide construction management and inspection services for the Maple Hill Park Improvement Project. And that concludes the consent calendar this evening.
Thank you. Would anyone like to pull any items for discussion?
I'll pull one, item 5.2.
So we'll put item 5.2 for discussion and...
And I'll make a motion for approval for the remaining items, assuming no one wants to pull anything else.
And I'll second that.
So we have a motion from Councilmember Chow and a second from Councilmember Tai. City Clerk Santana, please call for the vote.
Yes, Mayor Protem. Councilmember Chow?
Yes.
Councilmember Lo?
Yes.
Councilmember Tai?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Ting?
Yes.
And Mayor Liu Zapsen.
Okay, motion passed. Councilmember Tai, do you want to discuss?
Yeah, thank you. So I didn't know a different way to go about this, but I think it's page 19 in the packet. There was a reference to paying flack for damaged equipment. I'm fumbling for the right word, but my question is, are we finding that in more than one place? And what are we doing to make it so that? I know that we talked about this when we were looking at this, this idea to bring to Diamond Bar, and Walnut had had some problems. And I don't know if they gave up on it or they continue to tweak it, but if you can fill us in.
So yes, there was a incident of vandalism at one of the cameras on Lemon Avenue. This is the second time in that vicinity where there's been damage. Really what people do is they go up with a can of spray paint, and they spray paint the lens, and you can't recover functionality after that lens has been damaged with spray paint, so they replace it. It's approximately $850 to replace, and so we've had two incidents. I'm not really sure what Walnut's done. The last I had heard, they had not fully redeployed. We have not experienced the same level of damage that they did in Walnut. We've looked at some ideas that people have out there to protect them, but there's nothing so far that, you know, is fully compatible with the flock system. And so, short of losing that location, we replaced it and will likely be asking for additional funds in the next budget year to have some money on hand to deal with these situations so that our system remains fully functional.
But do, other than just replacing it, do we look at relocating it? Do we move it up? Do we, I mean, you can only reach it with paint.
The locations are placed to accommodate the functionality of the system. And the locations are placed specifically to cover locations. And so we can move it a little bit, but the height and location is based on the system design that we work with, both the provider and our law enforcement team to implement. And so they need to be at a certain height and location to capture the data that makes them work the way that we want them to.
And that's the only location that we've had trouble?
I believe the other one was nearby that one. I don't think it was the exact same location, but yes, it was in that vicinity on the western side of town.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate the information. I would make a motion to approve item 5.2.
Just a quick question, if I may.
Go ahead.
Since that's a camera, does the camera record the individual or the perpetrators who's vandalizing the camera?
It did not, to my knowledge. And if you'll recall, these are not live cameras per se. They take still shots of vehicles. And so it doesn't really work in the way that a security camera would capture somebody approaching, and then you might see a hand. This really takes pictures of vehicles as they pass by focused on the license plates.
I just have a quick question. How many incident of vandalism or destruction of our system so far this year?
In the history of the program, which launched, I believe, last December, there have been two.
So total, totally two incidents?
Correct.
Thank you. Anybody want to move to approve this item?
I made the motion to approve.
Second.
Please take a course of the vote.
Yes, Mr. Mayor Protem. Councilmember Chow?
Yes.
Councilmember Lo?
Yes.
Councilmember Tai?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Ting?
Yes.
And Mayor Liu Zapsen.
Motion passed. Next item is a public hearing. There's no public hearing items on tonight's agenda. So moving on for the council consideration, and also there's no council consideration item on tonight's agenda. The next item is council's subcommittee reports and the meeting attendance reports, council members' comments. Well, go ahead with Councilmember Chow.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I actually don't have anything to report. It's been a slow month, but I wish everyone an early happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Councilmember Lo?
Thank you, mayor. I attended the vector meeting, which our assessor referred to. That's the mosquito meeting. He called you the mosquito, but I'm actually the mosquito council member, so we'll have to correct him next time. So I did attend that meeting, and we were on the way to trying to abate the mosquitoes. We can abate them 100%, but we try our best. I want to thank staff for an excellent, excellent Veterans Day celebration last two weeks ago. You know, it's really, we do a great job, but this year was really particularly moving. And great big thanks for staff who worked on that. I really appreciate the item number 5.4 this evening, which is the Small Business Saturday, where we get a really huge return into our community if you shop local. So rather than, actually, my suggestion is rather than just simply shop local on November 30th, every day should be a small business shopping day. So please visit your local restaurants, vendors, florists, clothing store. It just helps our community. And I want to wish everyone a very, very happy Thanksgiving. Lots to be grateful for, great nation, great city. We're a nation of peace, prosperity, and of course, freedom and liberty. So happy Thanksgiving, everyone. And with that, I'll say good night. Thank you.
Councilmember Tai, do you have any comment?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I thought that Jeff Prang's, Assessor Prang's presentation was terrific. Again, he said as much that it's the first time he's been here to share with us. And I think it probably took him two terms just to get things in order and make it state-of-the-art. So we really appreciate his efforts. And I hope we will be able to put the link on our website, what can be accomplished with the Assessor, so people are aware of it, so we can help him get to the numbers that he's looking for to prevent fraud. And the other things that you can do, these are up to us, right? We can do these things. The free catalytic converter etching tomorrow at Calvary Chapel. It's, you know, every little bit helps, so take advantage of that. Take advantage of what the Assessor has to do as well for us and keep us safe. I want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, and with that, I'll say good night and God bless you.
Thank you. Time flies. It's going to be the end of the year, and next week we will have a Thanksgiving. And I wish all the families, friends, and business in our city have a very happy Thanksgiving. I also want to thank our city staff, our commissioners, our directors for their service for the city. And as we just have seen, that we are very short-staffed, but I think we, under Mr. Fox, will do our best to help the people who are in need. For example, for them to get a license to get as soon as possible so they can get building built, they can get business going on soon. And also, I want to take the opportunity to thank, say, our military men and women to serve our country, to protect us, and our public safety department, the sheriff department, the fire department here to serve us, to protect our communities. And also, I'm very grateful for many, many organizations in our city, such as Friends of Library, Diamond Bar Foundation, Women's Club, Heart of Hope, many, many organizations. They are doing so many volunteer work in this city to contribute to this city. So I'm very grateful for their contribution to this city. So with that, I hope everybody will have a very joyful time next week and food of good food, too. With that, I'll say good night. So meeting adjourned at 7:14.